This will be a meeting of the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees, January 12th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Richard?
Here.
What?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Harold just informed me that David will not be with us tonight. Item two is reported in the Hennessy United Board. We haven't met.
We haven't met. We do have a meeting next week.
Okay. Item three is Consider Approval of Consent Agenda. Item A, Minutes of Meetings. Item B, Approval of Claims as follows. December Purchase Orders, 2,721-87. January Purchase Orders, 31,267-99. January Restrictive Sales Tax Fund, 30,762-66. January Library Fund, 107-211. January Street and Alley Fund, 53-24. And Acceptance of the Following Reports, Treasure, Library, and Police. Are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
If not any, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Roll call.
What?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments. If you've got comments you want to make to the board, you're welcome to approach the podium. You will have three minutes. Frank?
Okay, my name is Frank Patten. I'm going to go ahead and do all my little comments now before you kind of get started, and you'll have them all. It won't take long. Number one is on the audit report that I was reading, and I think there's someone here maybe can answer some questions about that. Is, I was really curious as to why we use a modified system rather than an approved system on the accounting, just so that we have a better picture of exactly where you stand, because it doesn't take in your accounts receivables and all that according to the report. Which leads me to the claims, the purchase orders that always appear at the top of your meeting, is who, if any, sees the detail of the expenditures? Like, do you get a list, or are you privy to one that says, okay, the $2,000 was spent for one, two, three, four, five? I think that's something that should be disclosed. And the last thing is, taking all that accounting into consideration, is I kind of think it's time to step back and reconsider thinking about pay raises and so forth until you find out where your money's at.
Okay. Frank, the first item on the scheduled business will be a report from a representative from the auditing firm, and you're more than welcome to ask questions when she's given her report.
Okay, thank you. I may have just some short ones. Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do, but it's on another item, this one down on the list.
Okay.
All right, I'm pretty sure you guys know why I'm here. So, it's that time again, the car show is coming up. Of course, we're looking at April 23rd. We want to make sure everything that's good with you guys, being the town, like to make sure that we get the blessing of having it again. Last year, the numbers that we got back from the drone came in, and were about 1,800 cars and over 4,000 out-of-time people, is what they estimated. So, so we're bringing in some good people. Now, of course, I want to get the blessing from you guys to go ahead and have it again, our third year in a row, being brought to you, of course, by Cruze Oklahoma and sponsors around town. So, I want to see if that's good with you guys. A couple of questions I did have, and I know I kind of mentioned to you. Where did we ever get anywhere on the barriers with the school? Did we get those started? Have we talked to them yet? Do we know anything about that still?
I don't need to picture King Fisher's barriers as a Christmas break, but I have not been able to take it with the actor yet.
Okay, yeah, because that's kind of one of those big things is, because county's gracious enough, a lot of us use those. It takes me and one other guy a lo- a long time to put them all up and take them all down, so hopefully this year, watch, I had a little bit more help. But unfortunately, catch went way, way, way too easy. So, if we could find it, if, you know, we can't get any type of barriers, I need to see if we can find a possible way of, if we have sandbags in the town that we can slap on those puppies, some way to weight those things down. We get one of those cars damaged, and we might as well kiss this thing goodbye. That's just kind of how those go. Are we good with trash receptacles and porta-potties again this year?
They don't have to come and see me. I don't.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, can we? Like I said, I'm just now bringing this up. I've been working on this already now for three and a half months. So, I've been working on the sponsorships and things like that, trying to get people out here, trying to get the different events coordinated. But honestly, I usually don't try to bring things up until at least four months prior to you guys, because otherwise, that's just, it puts a big load on you. I understand you have a busy job as it is. But I need to make sure that we have these things, or the possibility of getting these things, so that way I can.
Since this isn't an agenda item, we can't take any action, but I don't foresee any problem to get trash receptacles, so that's.
Or device or something like that? Okay. All right, that's kind of one of those things. What, uh, did we find out anything on the food truck items?
Do you have what our attorney previously sent?
The attorney pretty much told us that he can write a, um, write a policy. In fact, I forwarded what he sent me to all the board members and asked for them, because he needs a lot more input, and I have not gotten anything back from the board members on what they, um, what they would like to see in it. I know we cannot, there's some discriminatory stuff that he said we've got to steer away from. I've been looking at other policies. I think most of the policies just say that they have to have a permit.
A permit.
The only one that I have found where you can limit them on events, I think, is Enids. But Perry did not have anything. How else did I look up?
After our conversation yesterday, Tiffany called Perry today.
I was talking to the city manager, or not the city manager, but the, I have to get her name specifically, but she said, yeah, they're able to lock them out on specific events due to their permit policies.
Not on their coordinates.
Interesting.
So, because they sent me those today.
Okay. So, I don't know how they did it then, but there wasn't a food truck one there. So, usually when we show up, people, people start asking. And the thing is, I don't want to have to do what I did last year. I mean, I had to change my life threat last year because I said no to food trucks. So, I have a family, don't need to deal with that. But those are my biggest concerns so far, is, of course, the barriers, things like that, see if we can, what we can do on that. Like I said, the county's been gracious enough for us to be able to do something like that.
The thing is, is if we go to do that, I think it's going to be really, really expensive, so we're going to have to look at that, too.
Maybe we could look at, maybe donations from the town, a couple of businesses and things like that, I'm not sure. That might be something we'd be able to look at. So, I know the town's going to be able to use them just more than just this event. So, I mean, I know that they're going to be used quite a bit, so. Other than that, that's pretty much.
I have a little trouble hearing. I think you're talking money.
I just said that it's going to be pretty expensive to build the barriers.
Okay. I think talking about last year, I think it would be, I don't know how much money from our advertising budget we have to give to the car show, that if we could get it early and know what the amount is, it helps you to plan.
It does. I'll be going around, actually, in the next week or two, starting going to some of the businesses. We've had quite a few of the local businesses actually donate, which has been a blessing. So, thank you to those companies that go on there, because we actually put them on the poster as sponsors and everything. They help pay for the band and certain events that we have just to get them out here.
I don't know what's legal, Tiffany, but I don't know if we could take money out of the town budget. I think we have an advertising budget or something, promotion budget?
Well, we, a lot of times for those festivals and stuff, that we use the hotel tax, but that's all used up for the budget this year.
It's all used up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, I kind of get with you, and like I said, on the food truck thing, I'd be willing to help when possible, needed, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else have any citizens' comments? Okay. Town administrators' report, Tiffany?
It's going to be a long meeting. You guys have my report.
Any additions, questions?
Have you had any luck finding replacements along the turn of the hour? Remind and stuff?
We have had a couple of, that just happened last Friday, and so we still had that one opening, but we've had a couple of applications.
Well, we had our reserve officers for quick.
And now we're just one or two. One, we're pretty good.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Other scheduled business discussed, approved, denied, rejected, and/or take action on the following. Item A is discussion with possible action to accept the 2021-2022 audit, as presented by Ladonna, sitting with Arlington Associates.
Yes, you should have in front of you. Yours will be prettier than the one I have in front of me, but inbound copy of your financial statements that includes our opinion and what we refer to as the Yellow Book Report. We will go through this pretty quickly, but then know and more than happy to answer questions tonight, tomorrow, next month. You know, if you, you have a question, you're welcome to reach out, and we'll answer it anytime. So, don't feel like you wish you would have asked something and you didn't, or I went fast and you wanted to know something else. So, your financial statements belong to you, just to make that really clear. You outsource to a different CPA firm called Crawford and Associates, who helps you with your preparation for audit, and they draft these financial reports on behalf of the city. So, they're presented as management. And I guess I should back up and introduce myself. Yes, I'm Ladonna Sining. I'm one of the partners with Arlington Associates out of Edmund, and we performed your audit. So, what we do then is we review documentation, accounting records, that sort of thing, to support the financial statements that you are presenting as representing the city. So, in that, at the end of the day, we issue a couple of letters. The first one being an opinion that's right behind the table of contents, labeled as the Independent Auditor's Report. Your report there is an unmodified opinion, meaning that everything in this report is standard language. We didn't adjust anything or change anything. So, there's no qualifications, no disclaimers, nothing like that. You do have, as the gentleman who spoke earlier pointed out, you do have an emphasis of matter paragraph that's the third heading there, on the basis of accounting. And that is drawing your attention to note one of the financial statements, which describes the basis of accounting. Financial statements are prepared on the modified cash basis of accounting, which a basis of accounting other than GAAP, and however, our opinions are not modified with respect to this matter. You can do modified cash basis financial statements. There's nothing wrong with that, as long as it's disclosed, as far as what that means is included and excluded, fine with the state auditor, all of that. I can go ahead and answer as to why. Some years ago, when the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is the standards that you follow for developing your financial statements, when they added all of the pension requirements, and pension liabilities had to be booked, and deferred comp-type things like vacation days had to be booked, and all of this increasing the complexity across the board, a large number of smaller cities and towns in Oklahoma moved to cap modified cash basis reporting. And why is to remove some of the complexity, to forego booking liabilities or assets that aren't necessarily yours, but they're coming from the pension funds of the state, because they do allocate out to the cities. So, that is what happened. And why that is, like I said, to reduce the complexity, which in turn reduces all of your costs around this a great deal. The Crawford firm, they can certainly provide you with financial statements that follow GASB standards that will be at more expense. We can audit those as well, that will be at more expense. So, that's why, and like I said, you're in pretty good company. We, we probably, I don't know, we audit somewhere around 20 to 25 cities in Oklahoma every year, and probably 10 of those are ones doing modified cash basis. So, it's not, it's not unusual to the town of Hennessy. In fact, it's very common with cities and towns of this size. So, that's the why, but it is absolutely a management decision of whether you want to do that or not do that. But it was to eliminate complexity. With that, behind that, on page seven, you have a section called Management Discussion and Analysis. This is the summary of the financial situation, narrowed down into about five or six pages here. So, if you weren't going to read your entire audit report and the whole thing, I would say read from page seven to 12, and that gives you a summary, a comparison to the prior year, that sort of thing. And then behind that, on page 13 and back, you have your actual set of financial statements. And of course, we're looking at June 30, 2022. Behind those, starting on page 24, you start with the notes for financial statements. That's where you're going to find that explanation of the basis and presentation of accounting. You're also going to find some disclosures that's going to fill in a little bit of the blanks that the modified cash basis left you with. And primarily, let me keep flipping, because I'm not finding my page. Primarily, starting on page 33, is your long-term debt, because that is not in your financial statements due to the modified cash basis. But it is disclosed back here on page 33 as to how much debt the town has, what's current portion, what's long-term, et cetera, and how that matures over the next five years, or maturities over the next five years.
Question. This information is very good. Has that been in previous quarterly financial reports, this information?
The, the management and discussion piece?
Page 33, yeah.
Page 33. It's always in your audit report, yes.
No, 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 no.
Oh, it's not in your quarterly?
No, because this is, this is our audit. So, this is our annual financial statement. They do not put it in the quarterly stuff. It's only in the annual.
Okay, yeah.
Can I ask why we wait so long to do an audit? Since when is the June 22?
Well, this really isn't so long. I mean, that's, that's the way to, to answer that. You have to hold your books open for at least 60 days to make sure all claims are filed, and that's a state law thing. So, you couldn't close the books before the end of August, which then means you really can't start an audit before about October at best. And so, that, that's why. It, I mean, it's not something that can get turned really quickly, because you can't begin for a while.
And when you, when you pick the audit, do you go to every account, or just you pick and choose what account you want to go through?
It depends on the accounts. We, what all auditors do, I shouldn't say just us, the way an audit works is they're risk-based. First, we gain an understanding of the town, then we gain an understanding of the internal controls at the town. We figure out what the major funds are and the non-majors, and those are reported differently in the report. We set a materiality standard based on range, which has a lot to do with our risk assessment of what that number is. And then on that, we go through. Do we skip accounts? No. Everything is touched at least in some way? Do we look at every transaction? No. The, to do a 100% audit, which is what that would be, would, the cost to do that would be prohibitive to getting an audit out. It also would be timeline-wise, something that would take probably 12 months to get through, because you would be recreating every entry. So, no, we don't. We do look for high-risk areas. We do more there. We do less on low-risk areas. We try to understand what's happening within the city. But to, to look at everything, that's not what an audit does. We do do that work. We do it in a forensics practice, where if you want to look at 100% of credit card transactions, we can do that. But like I said, that's not something you would want to have 100% of all transactions looked at, unless you had a reason to look at them. And that's why it's done in a forensics practice, is know we have reason to believe there's issues within this account, or, I mean, and I use credit cards as an example, because that's the one I have going on right now, but it's around some particular situation. And so, we want you to look at this, or I guess we have another city happening with, we want you to look at the chief of police and what the police department's doing, because there's citizen concerns there. So, we will do that. That's a different type of engagement and handled differently.
Should the town go do a more in-depth audit from time to time, or should we go to yearly, just kind of like what we do?
I would do what you do, but I would make sure that you are conveying any concerns to the auditors, because that impacts our risk assessment and what we're doing. We do react to what we're told, that there's concerns about this, or that, or whatever. We react to that. We dig deeper into that area. But you are doing exactly what, as far as I know, every city or town in Oklahoma's doing.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, and then if they have an area they want dug into, they will ask to have that done.
All right. My, thank you.
Frank?
Just real quick interruption along his lines, which I was going to ask you about. The report on internal control? You say you didn't really look at that, if I understand the way you put on page 45?
Yeah, haven't gone to there yet, but we can jump back there.
Well, that's, but I'm saying, don't, I would think it'd be wise to do a periodic one, just a routine, just so that you kind of know what's going on, not, I mean, if you, of course, if you're aware of some issue, you do it, but just as, just to keep everybody's noses clean, I think you'd want it done.
Frank?
You know, is it documented? Is there, is there backup for all the checks you wrote? Is, you know, just so you know, but.
Frank, I apologize, but you're accounting by training, you said.
No, I am not, but by, by experience.
You work in.
Yes, yes. And it's very easy to, I mean, you know that, documents can be modified, forged, whatever, and that's when you tell somebody, I think we got a problem, and they look into it. But there's, you know, are we requiring copies of receipts for every expenditure, you know, like my company does? You don't write a check without a piece of paper saying why, who, what, and where.
We do have that, and also the town board signs off on it. So, one person will sign the check, Katie will do.
Well, that's why I was asking if you'll see those numbers.
We'll sign that. And then one of the board members, we divided up in between all five of us, and all five of us come in sometime during the month, and we sign the invoices.
Right, okay. Well, that's why I was asking.
So, we do do that, yes.
We sign our claims, and the invoices are attached for all expenditures, even, even the routine ones like federal withholding tax and all of that are on a claim form that we have to review and stuff.
What confuses me on that is when you come in, here's a stack of invoices to sign off that tall, they're all mixed up. It might be police here, and something with a parks here, something with a computer, something for electrical lights. And I kind of wish we could sign those invoices by department function.
Those.
I sign off on the invoices, but you know, I have no, I have a grasp, but there's a lot of expenses this town has to bear, but I can't really get my handle on it, because it's all mixed up.
Richard? That is because a lot of times when we write a check, it's for covering multiple departments.
Like OG&E, for example?
That covers all of our streetlights, our park, our city hall, our police department, our library, all that OG&E. Then, say, we pay garrison lumber. That's all of our water stuff, our park stuff, our street stuff, I mean, all of that, and it's all one claim voucher that has all of those invoices on it.
But it doesn't break out, the voucher does not break out?
Yes, it does.
Which it does.
And also, all checks.
Otherwise, you'd have to write 30 checks.
Also, all checks have two signatures. Three.
Three.
Three? Excuse me, three signatures.
That's even better. You can get all three there.
On every, on everyone, yeah.
We do pull checks and supporting invoices. We don't pull 100% of them.
Well, it'd take forever.
Right. That, that's exactly the thing. It would take forever. But we look at checks over whatever amount we choose to set for that year, as well as anything that catches our attention.
And that's up your choosing and not anybody within the town government?
Correct. We select that sample. We tell.
I just want to make that clear.
We tell your employees which ones we want.
And they come here, and when they get here is when they give us, hey, we need these checks pulled. And so, that's when we go, and we get them to them that day, and.
They don't know in advance.
Yeah, we do the same thing with payroll. Again, we don't look at all of it, but we will pull some of it, and more some years, less other years, but it's all part of the risk assessment process, and we'll ask for time cards or the HR file to support the salary, or minutes to support the salary, different things like that.
I'll have one last question when you finish your question.
Okay. So, you have your notes to the financial statements that start there on about page 24, and like I said, I directed you on over to page 33, 34, because that's where you start having some information for things that are not on your books due to the modified cash basis, but they're here, which is your debt, what your pledged revenue is, because you have utility revenues that are pledged against debt, and sales tax revenues that are pledged against debt. So, it's important things to know. Your compensated absences are there, and that's where I talked about, where you would have to book the liability for vacation leave under some of the newer standards. Any litigation is disclosed there, et cetera. So, there are, there is important information in the notes to the financial statements, and possibly even more important because of the modified cash basis of accounting. Behind that, you get a budget actual comparison for major funds that were required to have a budget. Then you get into some combining financials, where I talked about there's major funds and there's non-major. Non-major funds are reported at the back. They get combined and brought to the front of the report. And that's really just kind of a data management process that GASB has in place. That's driven by standards. We don't choose that. There's standards for determining what's major, what's non-major, but it keeps you from having 27 columns on your balance sheet, and instead, you have the major funds individually, non-majors at the back. At the very back of this, you have the other letter from us. If you remember, I said that we issued two. We call this the Yellow Book Report. That's because it literally is a book with a yellow cover, but what's in it? The last two pages, all the way at the back, 45 and 46, I think. It's the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters Based on Audit or Financial Statements Performed in accordance with Government Auditing Standards. This report you only get because you're a governmental entity, and because we audited under government auditing standards, which are different from our regular auditing standards. You get a report on internal control over financial reporting and a report on compliance and other matters, but these are reports, they are not opinions. So, we are not issuing an opinion that your internal controls are solid. We're not issuing an opinion that you are in compliance with all laws and regulations. Instead, this is a report that would tell you anything we saw that indicated weak internal controls or indicated non-compliance. So, it's the reverse of an opinion. And that's because there is no, there is no full-on. And that's because there is no, there is no full-on search, right? So we can't go on record saying you're in compliance with state laws. We would have to, I don't know how you would ever get to that sort of an opinion. But what you can say is, we did all of our work, and we did not find any non-compliance with state laws. And that's the difference between a report and an opinion.
So is the difference between municipal government, because the school board just approved theirs, and they had some problems in there, like, you know, people weren't submitting information before they wrote the check and that kind of stuff. They had some things that were wrong. Do you all, is that not in here, or is that just sort of a general?
That would be in here if we had any findings. They would be...
Okay, they would be there.
We did not have any findings. They would be brought out in this Yellow Book Report, in this last report. It would mention them. It would tell you what number they were, and they would be attached at the back.
Okay.
Behind this report.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So no, it's exactly the same as a school audit.
I know. Like when we were at the home mail conferences, I'm sitting there at that class, one of the other council members, he ain't here but tonight, but he asked me to ask a question about when they do a report or an audit, you guys always seem to find something wrong no matter what.
Well, see, not really.
Is that the difference between a state forensic audit or versus your guys' audit?
That would definitely be the difference between a forensic audit or something that we're looking at specifically. That does not mean, that does not mean that we're issuing all clean reports. The city, whose board meeting I was at Tuesday night, had findings. Hennessy does not have findings. You know, it's, that, I mean, that's an annual decision of did we find control weaknesses? Did we find non-compliance? Now, that would be control weaknesses relative to the financial statements, right? We're not looking at all activity of the city. And it would be compliance with laws relative to financial reporting. Not all kinds of things that I guess a city can violate, but rather state laws around financial reporting, around going out for bids for things over 25,000, you know, that kind of thing.
But four years ago, I think it was around four years ago, that we got a finding for not having all of the purchase orders with the invoices. And then two years, I think it was around two years ago, maybe last year or the year before, we, our treasurer did not open the bank statements. And so that was one of our findings, is that the treasurer needed to open the bank statement.
Yes.
And I'm thinking that that is an internal control. And so we, we changed that to where the bank statement is directly to the treasurer, does not get opened until the treasurer opens it.
Yes, had to have been two years ago, I think. Because if there's a finding, then the following year, that finding gets reported again with the disposition of it. Is it a repeat finding or was it addressed? They should be being addressed, and Hennessy has historically addressed those. But yes, the treasurer situation was your internal, your internal control has to be that someone opens the bank statement who doesn't have anything else to do with cash. They need to open it, they need to, they need to actually read through it. And so that wasn't happening, and then that was a finding and a recommendation that, hey, have someone open this.
Is that the same kind of same thing with like credit cards? Should they be opened by the same person handling the check?
Credit, credit cards need to be reviewed by someone who does, ideally, doesn't have a credit card. And someone with enough authority to do something about it if you see a problem with them. Now, that does, they don't have to open the credit card statement, right? Because changing a credit card statement's not going to help you that much when they're all online. Pretty well true for bank statements too, unless the checks are coming in there and it needs to not be altered. So, but yes, someone should review credit card statements and look at the activity in them. For, well, for compliance with...
Well, our accounts payable clerk, I mean, she does the bills, and so...
She opens credit cards?
All we have is staples, lows.
Lows. Yeah, I don't think you have purchasing cards here. So you don't have cards like a Visa or something like that.
I just want an Amazon card.
No, I don't want you to have an Amazon card.
My wife don't either.
Yeah, yeah. The one I'm looking at credit cards now, they've, they've got a lot of Amazon charges and they lost their receipts. And how do you lose an Amazon receipt? Because you can log back in and go get it. So anyway, no, Amazon cards are not a great thing. A lot of cities use the purchasing cards to speed up the process of buying supplies, but Hennessy is not. And those are a little bit higher risk, and you would have to have more controls around them.
Thanks for asking my question, answering my question.
You're welcome.
So it looks like Hennessy gets an A.
We didn't find anything at Hennessy. A for effort. Or not the State Education Department? No, we had no findings.
No findings.
It's from our audit of this year and the things we selected to look at, everything was in good shape.
Now, I have had people ask me, why do we not change auditors? Can you address that? Like, like how your firm handles it and then...
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of philosophies out there, and some people believe you should and some believe you shouldn't. It's a process where I said we have to build an understanding of the town and an understanding of their internal controls. That is a process that is very time-consuming in a first-year audit. And something that we, that is built over time. So the more knowledge you have of the city, the more you know, oh, they don't have P O cards at Hennessy, I don't need to worry about that, versus I don't know if they have them or not, and I'm still trying to figure that out. So that is why, in my, and I'll ask you a question too of how we handle it internally, but in my professional opinion, changing auditors does nothing but drive up audit fees. Because when we're the new auditor at an organization, that first-year workload is a lot. Now, we don't necessarily build it into that first-year fee, but we build it in to recoup it, right? And so it's because, and it's because of building those what we call perm files, the permanent files that help us maintain the understanding of the city. And that's everything from an H R policy to, oh, we have the, we already have the copy of the appraisal on that land that was donated eight years ago. We already have it. We don't need to go back and get people to try to find it for us so that we know how I got valued. So it's everything from that. Internally, what we do, and we can certainly do that at the town of Hennessy, because I've been here for a few years now, is we rotate partners on them. And so where I'm one of the partners in the firm, there's other partners in the firm, they come in. And where I said, we're doing risk assessments, we're making sample selections, those are professional judgment things. Changing that partner gets you a different person with a different opinion, who, we all tend to kind of have our own hot-button issues, and that person may have a different hot, you know, what are they really worried about? What do they see a lot more of? So we tend to do that, and that is a best practice within firms, to rotate the partner on the engagement so that there is a new set of eyes.
Can we get estimated costs of a cost audit?
Oh, Tiffany should have what our fee was. I don't actually know off the top of my head.
It was in the contract that we do it in, like, May, June. I think it's around $6,000.
I think more like 10.
Was it 10?
If I had to guess, it may have been six some years ago, but... Yeah, that, that could be. Mine is a shot in the dark when I say 10. I don't know, but that would be if I had to guess.
I don't know, I just, to put it out there on, we got camera here.
Yeah, so that's, that's a question for Tiffany to let her to answer.
I know it's all public records, but a lot of people don't understand public records, you know, but they can...
Yeah, but it does come to you in a contract that you guys approve and sign before we ever get started.
I dropped mine.
Frank, you got it?
Well, just, you can probably ask this quick. If I wanted to go somewhere and look at all of the financial commitments that the town had, long-term programs that are committed, they have to come up with that money. You know, you've got to have X dollars in the bank at whenever. Where does it show you that so that you can be assured that you've still got that money set aside for those commitments?
Well, the long-term commitments are in, in note nine on page 33. Now, if you're talking about shorter-term things like accounts payable...
Yeah.
Accounts receivable, those are not in this report.
That's what I thought. Okay, let's see it.
Frank, were you referring to employee salaries?
Everything. I mean, you've got to have money in the bank to pay your obligations, and you don't want to overspend. You may think you've got a million dollars in the bank, but you really don't because 999 is spoken for. So that's what you got, that's...
That comes into play.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure somewhere, somebody knew the number.
Yeah. Every year we do the budget, and Tiffany's very diligent about watching our sales tax because we have to estimate what we think is going to come in, and we can't over-budget or overencumber that. And Tiffany's very careful about keeping an eye on the sales tax revenue and our other revenue to make sure that just because we budgeted a number, that the money is actually coming in to keep that covered.
Right, because sales tax revenue is kind of like the lottery. You just, you really don't, you don't know what you're going to get.
It's been better. I mean, it's been a variety. Yeah, it's been over-projections so far.
Well, I just want to make sure that when someone, you know, there's time to pay the piper, that you have the money.
Exactly, exactly.
And those, the budget actual comparisons start on page 37, and you can see the original budget. Any budget amendments show up then as the final budget. Then here is what actually happened, and here's the variance from that. And they cannot budget to having a deficit. That's not something you can do in Oklahoma. So the budget is the guiding document that reigns them in. And as long as they're living within their budget, that should not be an issue.
Thank you.
And I think a lot of our budgeting, we're running 60% above, is that right?
Yeah. But, but the one thing the budget doesn't really consider necessarily is debt, principal payments on long-term debt so much. And so that is, is disclosed in here, that, okay, here's how much your debt payments are that are coming out of this.
Can you do special requests? Like, one thing I'd like to have is the sales data for the last five years by month on one page. Can you, with your computer systems, just kick that out?
That wouldn't be them, that would be our accountant.
Yeah, that would be Crawford and Associates, and I am certain that they can.
The State Tax Commission, they have that.
Well, I'm not real smart, Barbara, I wouldn't, I couldn't pull it down.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm a dumbbell.
Your monthly tax revenues are out there on the left side, and that's public record. But anything else, yes, your consulting firm can do that. We deal with annual numbers and very, I shouldn't say we never look at monthly, because we do. In some of the analytics we do and how we're figuring out what we want to look at, we do dig down to monthly numbers, but really overall, we're looking at the annual.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a 2021, 2022 audit from Arling and Associates.
Second.
Roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item B's discussion, an action to approve payment of Noda invoice 18523-2 using local funds for C D B G grant number 1852321.
Thank you, LeDon.
Thank you.
Thank you, really appreciate it. Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions on that? We were able to have our pre-construction conference and meet the requirement of being in construction for, by 270 days from the start of the contract. So at that point, Noda can then put in their second invoice. So it's just a standard invoice that we have.
Is that the water line?
This is for the drainage improvements, our community development block grant.
Drainage, okay. Thank you.
These were budgeted items when we got the grant, so it's...
I make a motion to approve payment of Noda for the 18523-point-2 using local funds for the C D B G grant number 18523-21.
My second.
Roll call? Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item C's discussion with possible action to approve fiscal year '23 REIT contract.
This is, we were awarded the REIT contract for the water line on Dunlap. This is just the contract with Noda.
How much did we award you?
$127,701. $127,70191.
Yes, it is, very nice.
And a shout-out to, to Noda and the other COGS for going to the state legislature and getting us more money out in these, on these REIT grants so we can get more. Because we were, we used to be maxed out at 50,000.
I noticed that in your, usually I would, that the, the figures have about doubled.
Yes, we had, I think we, the state gave us 2.5 million to be able to give out to our eight counties. With a little de-obligation, de-obligated funds and some interest, we actually gave out 2.7 million to our entities. So yeah, so we actually had some large projects we were able to fund this year. We had 45 applications submitted, and I believe we funded 31 applications.
Oh, that's good. Is that better than normal?
Yes.
Well, we have, of course, with the more money.
Yes, a lot more applications, a lot more funding.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the F Y concrete REIT contract.
My second then. Roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Okay, item D's discussion with possible action to approve 18523 C D B G 21 notice to proceed for Craft Reynolds Construction Company.
I did know that was going to be on the agenda, and I already presented that to you. It's just a standard form that we have in the community development block grant world. Since we've hired Craft Reynolds to do the work, then we have a pre-construction conference that says, when are you going to start? And they kind of give us the dates, and then we add in the 160 days to get the project done and come up with the end date. So the notice to proceed then says that they're going to start maybe around January 23rd, and then they should be done by July 2nd, hopefully before then, but between January 23rd and July 2nd, they have to get the project done. So that's just a standard form that the mayor has to sign to, to get that done, to document it.
I have a question.
Yep.
The Census Bureau reached out to me about that.
Really? Okay.
And they're supposed to be emailing me, and they're wanting like all of this information. Is there, I mean, what is that? I've never...
I've never heard the Census Bureau needing that, so...
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I've never heard that before.
I make a motion to approve the 18523 C D B G 21 notice to proceed for Craft Reynolds Construction Company.
My second then. Roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item E is discussion with possible action to approve resolution 2023-01 notice of election. This is...
This is for town board and town clerk collection that will be coming up in April. And the, I'm assuming, I haven't seen it, I'm assuming we've got a resolution in our packet. Yeah. I did see that. The three terms that will be open will be the one that Richard occupies, the one that Cliff occupies and the one I occupy plus town clerk that Katie occupies.
When do we have to have him, when is the filing date, do you remember?
I think it's the February eighth. February eighth.
Yeah.
It's February sixth, seventh, and eighth.
All right, move the election.
Fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth. Usually it's three days.
Yeah, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
No, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Oh, I thought you said fifth.
That's true, yeah, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Sixth, seventh, and eighth, okay. And you have to take a notary with you if you go late.
Oh, would they go late?
Surely they're, I mean, they have a notary there, don't they?
Yes, you'll get the form at the election board and then you take it down the hall.
Down to the town, down to the county clerk.
Okay, you're looking at him, not many.
Bert, what's the definition of life?
I think the county clerk's office closes at, do you know, Bart, four?
I think it's, I think it's four, I'm not sure whether it's four or four-thirty, but it's a whole courthouse that closes. I believe it's toward thirty and then...
Because this says till five.
I know. If you were going to, if you were going to file after that, you would have to call them and they'd have to have somebody who'd let you in the door. They are legally bound to do that, but to let you.
The door closest to their office is usually open.
Yes, but all the doors are locked.
But the main doors to the building are locked.
Ain't that what happens on the school board, got to three thirty-three or something like that?
Yeah, that was to...
James Smith.
I make a motion to approve the resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-oh-one notice of election.
I second it. Roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item S, discussion with possible action to approve police policy and procedures, manager?
I modified the problems that David found with it last month. It's all, it's all fixed now. You guys should all have it. There's no blank, there's no blank spaces anymore. There's no longer any blank spaces like he was talking about how, like on agenda item A, B, C, D. C and D were blank in place, in a handful of places. All that's been fixed.
The question I got to ask on our agenda, we got one copy and then today we got another copy sent to us. Through the emails. So, which one? Our emails today that you sent us?
I sent you, I just got the updated one from Aaron and I mailed it out this morning.
Okay, so the one I originally sent was not updated.
So, my question is, can we accept it today?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, if it wasn't on the agenda, you can't do it.
Well, the, the new one was, the old one was.
But it's on the agenda.
Okay, I thought it was on that.
Yeah.
I mean, I read, what sucked about it is I read both of them.
You don't need really, that's the day.
You should know it all then, because it, all it took out was spaces.
Oh, that's...
Yeah.
Those are blank spaces I took out, it's all fixed. You're in between the line, Harold.
More spaces than one.
Okay, do you, are you going to make that, Harold?
Yeah, I'm motion to approve the police policy and procedure minimum, since I read it twice.
I'll second that. I'll only read half.
Roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item G, is discussion with possible action to authorize bidding process for new storm sirens. This is something that we talked about some time back. I have, I guess, is my other hat, as fire chief, I've been working on this for some time and needed to get with our OGNB representative, which I've now done. But what this, what this will do is replace all of our storm sirens. The storm siren that is on the water tower is totally non-functional. It is, been there sixty-seven years. The one at the school, the one on Oakwood Drive, those were put in in nineteen-seventy-three. So, if my math serves me correctly, those would be fifty years old this year. The others in town were bought, used from the city of Stillwater approximately, I'm going to guess, twenty years old. So, long story short, this would replace everything. I've enclosed a map. It will put some in new location. But as you can see, they are kind of scattered and zigzagged across the community. Will give us more than ample coverage. The one way down south would be on a road at Ike's Acres that would cover Ike's Acres, Miller Heights, Oakwood Drive area. There's one now at the end of Oakwood Drive, but it is sitting on private property and is, has, since it was put in, has become somewhat landlocked. Has anybody got any questions that I can answer?
It may have been this about six months ago.
We did. And Harold, since it's been quite a while, like I said, that our, I needed to get with OGNB and make sure we could get power supply to each of these locations. And our OGNB person at the time had had an accident and subsequently retired and... Yeah, so I just, I wanted to put it back on the agenda so it's fresh on everybody's mind.
Are we going to go back to weekly testing on these?
Yeah, I'm going to.
These will, these will test automatically on a daily basis, only they won't sound.
Okay.
The computer will actually send a signal to each one to make sure there's continuity. And let me go ahead, since you brought that up, Tony. What we, the sirens we currently got are powered by electricity and activated through telephone landlines. These new, the new system would be powered by electricity. Each would have its own battery backup and they're activated by radio. So, as long as Aaron or whichever officer's got a handheld or a mobile radio, they can activate them from that. But they, they will actually test daily. And I, I think I heard somebody say something about the one that would be over here that can play chimes. That's, that's not really, that wasn't really, it can play chimes at noon, it can do whatever you want. It would be an electronic type. The reason of putting it over there is because that's where we have talked about a pavilion area and it can also be used, it's electronic, can be used as a public address system. So, the others would just be mechanical. But that one would actually be a large amplifier and speakers that could be used as a PA system. But I thought somebody said something, because at noon each day, if you want, it can play Westminster chimes or...
I know, these are going to be multi-tone, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. I've, I've seen some communities don't have multi-tone.
That one will not. The motor, the motor-driven and they will, you know, they will wind up to a certain frequency and back down.
Okay.
Bert, just out of curiosity, you know, it sounds like this is kind of expensive expenditure.
It is. I really don't know until we get it back, Richard, but I'm going to guess in the hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand range.
That does not surprise me.
Yeah, I'm going to guess that maybe as a minimum. We've got money in our, in emergency services restricted sales tax fund to fund it. So, the money is there to fund it.
But it's actually just taking money to accept bids, all right?
Exactly.
Not actually, not actually buying.
It's a request for proposal for companies to, to actually give us a proposal of what, what the install.
And since this is a very high-tech system, I assume there would be an annual maintenance contract with it?
They have, they have those because with it being battery backup, what is in those is for, basically they're car battery, a little more high-tech than that. But they will do an annual, you can buy an annual maintenance contract where they come out annually, which I think would be an excellent idea.
Well, I think that's almost a have-to.
And, and check everything and replace anything that needs replacing.
Thank you.
But I don't want to call up on top of the water tower and change up the batteries. No, and there won't be one on the water.
I make a motion to authorize the bidding process for the new storm system sirens.
Second that. Roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes. I didn't see anything about the next one.
Okay, item H, discussion with poss, discussion with possible action to approve nine-one-one in our local agreement with Kingfisher County, subject to town attorney's changes.
I have some questions and comments, if that's all right. You want me to stand back there? Is here, okay?
Well, no, one.
Okay. As you know, the last meeting, I was not excited about you all making the change. And since then, several people have come forward and said that they weren't. I have a couple of questions. First, how is the money that goes to E-nine-one-one, how is that established as the county money? Because I noticed on the sheet there it says county. There's so much money that they put into it. So, how is that, how are we paying for this already is what I'm asking, I guess. How are we paying for the nine-one-one service?
Now?
Yes.
It's a, Tiffany jumping up and working, it is a telephone pass on landlines and cell phones.
So, we, the citizens, are already paying for this, right?
Correct.
So, their problem is that they aren't getting enough money so they can't operate? Is that the deal? That's why they're doing these little services for towns?
The, what they would be doing for us would be additional services such as weekend water costs, whatever a citizen needed, whatever our dispatch is handling now. Hold on just a second.
Yeah, I, I saw the numbers.
Yeah.
I wasn't impressed.
So, calls for service for the police department were a hundred and seven this month. And as you go down through those numbers that list all the police calls, there's many that are not.
I thought you were talking about the numbers in Kingfisher.
No.
Dollar numbers.
So...
I, I worry, I worry about the safety of our police officers and of our town, of us not having someone at that police station twenty-four-seven. This last week, I typed up a police report that I received, a guy that they had and it was a drug deal. And so, the officer came and, and took him to the police station. So, is the police station only, the cop's going to have to say, oh, I got to open the door here because nobody's there. There won't be any twenty-four-seven there. And so, this guy is all along with this perp. I watch a lot of TV. So, he, no, the cop, so the cop is alone with this guy and he's got all this paperwork that he's got to do and there's nobody else in that building if, if you go to this service. Right? I mean, I'm, I'm asking questions.
On that, if we were to arrest anybody, we would no longer be using our jail. We wouldn't be able to because...
I know you...
So, we, you wouldn't be alone in there because you could take them to Kingfisher County. You, you understand, Kingfisher County's jail.
So, from now on, you're just going to have to immediately take them to county and then you fill out your paperwork?
You could, you could fill out, what paperwork are you talking, I don't know what you're talking about.
Aren't you going to, when you've, when you've arrested somebody and you...
You booked them in.
And you have, yes, aren't you going to have questions for him?
Yeah.
So that you can even do your report? I'm, I'm, I'm asking questions.
On the book-in, on the book-in sheet, so when you book them in, there'll be a, a jailer from our, our Kingfisher County there while you're with them. You won't be alone with them here because you don't take them into our police department anymore. I guess I understand.
Oh, they did the other night. They took...
Was there, was there not a dispatcher there?
So, you're just immediately going to take them to Kingfisher?
I'm assuming so.
If they're arrested, then you know.
Yeah, they're arrested, they go to Kingfisher.
So, then we got the cops out of town because he took some guy to county and...
I mean, we might have to do that possibly anyway, you know, on any arrest. I mean, the only time we put them in our jails on municipal charges.
Well, I hope that you've got somebody else on standby.
We would, we would. We're out, we're out to leave the town uncovered for thirty minutes to an hour.
Oh, come on.
Oh, we're leaving the town uncovered. I'm sorry, I, I...
Who would be doing that?
I really have a problem with this. I, I really think as an employer, that this is not a good thing for your employees. And I hate to use this term, which came from a friend, that it's reckless to do that for, for the police officers. Wait, have you talked to the police officer? Did they?
Absolutely.
And they say, oh, this is fine, this is the greatest thing since...
Well, I've talked to her, she's... Yes.
But you haven't talked to any of the other officers?
No.
I mean, he's at your mercy. They're all at your, they're all at your mercy.
I can answer a little bit of that.
Go.
I haven't, I have to actually talk to my officers, I have one. But the thing is, none of our officers, most of our officers haven't worked with the nine-one-one center. Most of them have been right here in Hennessy. But the ones, towns that have switched over to nine-one-one center think they are safer with the nine-one-one center because they can communicate with their county sheriffs, you know? Like now, we cannot, you know?
Why?
Because of radios and stuff, we can't transport back and forth with each other.
Well, ooh, we're going to get, we're going to be safe from tornadoes, but we're not going to be safe?
No, Barb, this is good.
In being able to...
But we're going to be able to now. We're going to nine-one-one, we will be able to contact back to them.
Well, why couldn't we do it on our own, is what I'm saying.
Because we have our own dispatcher.
I guess we could turn on our TV and we could get a siren warning too. No, I, I'm concerned about this. I know that others are. John Mises called me. He's a former vice mayor of the town and the police commissioner. And he thinks it's a big mistake, a huge mistake to make this. He, he also said that he thought the onsite night dispatcher is critical to the safety of the people in the town and even in the rural areas. I think he was quoting Joe Hickey one time when he said, you can't have a town without water, you can't have a town without sanitation and you can't have a ti, town without law enforcement. But it's critical that we have them. And, you know, I understand that the, I understand that the dispatchers that are with county. We trained them. The two that I know of, we trained them at our police department. I don't know if we just couldn't pay them enough or whatever for them going there, but I'm assuming money was a concern there. But we, we trained those people.
But how many people would call four-oh-five, eight-five-three, four-four-four when there's an accident?
If I call nine-one-one and said I, and said I had a fire at my house, they're going to call you and then they're, all they have to do is...
And therein lies the big problem.
So, do you think that we, where's the miscommunication if you're not getting it cooked enough?
The, the problem, Barb, is when somebody calls nine-one-one, they have to transfer that call to Hennessy. Tiffany elaborated on that a little bit because she called nine-one for an injury at school, correct? They have to transfer that call to live EMS, if it's an ambulance, and then they transfer it back to Hennessy to dispatch fire department if, since we've been sitting here, I've got three emergency calls.
Why can't they dispatch it to both of you at the same time? Why can't they, why can't they dispatch it to the police department, the ambulance and the fire department all once?
Because the technology isn't, isn't there to do that.
They transfer the call, like the caller. They don't take the information, they transfer to the caller.
But you're still going to pick that up.
But you can't transfer the call to multiple places.
I don't see any advantage to this other than it's going to cost us a lot of money and we aren't going to have the jail open. If something, not the jail, excuse me, the police station. I mean, it's not going to be open, right?
It'll be open Monday through Friday.
Woo, be, oh, goodie, from eight to five.
Does.
Well, yeah, everything happens between eight and five. There's always a problem.
Okay, I'm going to give you another example.
Do you think they arrest today?
Pardon?
How many people do you think they arrest today?
I don't know. Some days, it's not any. It's just like any other business or opportunity. Sometimes you're really busy and sometimes you're not. But when you're busy, and especially when you're talking about people's lives, yes.
Barb, I guess I'm just struggling to understand what you mean by what, I don't. When we arrest somebody, the dispatchers don't typically just help us arrest those people, so I don't.
They are there in case you need something.
On the streets? I mean, that, what it comes down to, if we arrest somebody on district charges, we don't even talk, we talk to the dispatcher, we don't see them until we're back from the Kingfisher County.
So you don't do your report until you come back to the police department? And so now then you're going to take out your key and go in and if someone's banging on the door, the hell with them? You're not going to give them any help?
I have no issue talking about.
I'm sorry, I know. This is an emotional thing for me. And because my father was a police officer, my son worked in law enforcement, and I know how important it is and their lives are important to those of us in this community. And they have been doing a good job. They've been doing a good job for the community. And I think it's a total waste and I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way. And I, I would urge you not to accept this contract. Yes, I realize you voted on it before, but it's not final until you approve this contract.
I'm going to give you another example.
Okay.
911 took a fire call on a structure fire, a home, on Saturday. They transferred that call to Hennessy. Somehow, an error was made and I know it was just a typo. It was not, I'm not blaming any personnel.
I saw that. I saw that. I mean, I saw, I've got the report.
So the fire department, did you realize the fire department was sent way out east on a house fire that was southwest of town?
Do you don't think that could happen if you were getting it from a dispatcher in Kingfisher?
I think the chances are a lot less if it's going through one party instead of two or three.
I don't think that was the, that wasn't the problem.
That was the problem, Barb.
The problem was, I thought the problem was the time on one of those.
That was not the problem. But yeah, it was a time problem because the fire department was sent east of town when the fire was southwest.
So did we screw up or did they screw up when they did?
We screwed up here.
Okay.
And it was just a typo. Yeah, stuff happens. I understand that.
It could have happened with Kingfisher too. You used to bitch, no, you used to, you used to be in this meeting room and complain about the E911.
You're exactly right.
Getting information to the fire department. And then you went over there and you were, fell in love with all the equipment and everything. I know, that they had. I mean, you were, you were.
Let me tell you why, let me tell you why I fell in love with the equipment, okay? Because I'm not denying any of that. I sit there and watch and the reason that, I'm not saying they can't make a mistake, but when this fire call comes in, it comes up on a map with GPS coordinates.
Why can't we get the maps? Why can't we get better equipment?
Because we don't have millions of dollars to do that.
It takes millions of dollars to do that? Well, we're going to hand it over to the county.
We're already paying for that.
I know. Hey, I'm paying for it. I have a cell phone. I have a landline.
But that's what I'm saying. We're paying for the county. Sales tax already.
Right, so we're already paying for a ser, we're already paying for a service.
Why do we not use it?
Because, well.
Why don't we use it? We're paying for it.
Why aren't we using it?
I pay thousands of dollars a month in cell phone bills and some of my taxes go to that. Why don't we use it?
Well, bitch it then for giving us better service. Get better service then, is all I can say.
But the only way we're going to do it over here, the only thing we're going to do, how we're going to do it over here.
It's not safe.
Raise your water bill up.
Harold, it's not safe for our police officers.
It is.
It is not safe for our police officers. How do you feel, Shelley, I don't want to put you in the spot, but how do you feel your husband's a police officer? Is this going to be better? And I know your daughter is a dispatcher and she's a hell of a good one too.
So at first, I was 100% against it. Yes, and I'm afraid of it. And after speaking with my daughter and speaking with different people, as my daughter told me, there's no diff, I mean, I don't want to quote her because we talk a lot of personal stuff, but when you call 911, you're, I mean, it's, your officer is only as good as your dispatcher, right?
I understand that.
So when you call 911, Kingfisher County, to my understanding, has more technology and has better equipment to get our officers to where they need. This is just my understanding.
That's what I'm just saying.
We got an officer right here. Can I get an officer, sir? You know, we got an officer right here. I said, I brought this originally up six months ago, whatever.
I know you did.
And before I did this, I went around and talked to police departments that went to the 911 center that had local dispatchers. And they said that they felt safer with the 911 center than they did with the, their local dispatcher. Because they could communicate with their deputies and they could defi, you know, because we only have one officer on duty. Well, the county also has officers on duty and they could be in our area within a matter of minutes. Here, if he's in trouble at night, at 2:00 in the morning, he can communicate with a deputy by talking to him on the phone. Am I all right, sir?
That's happened multiple times.
Well, he could probably call his chief or call another officer too.
It's going to take him 20, 30 minutes to get out of bed at 2:00 in the morning.
And they all live here.
Well, it's going to take them 20 minutes to get from Kingfisher because they're usually not around here.
The problem here and what I think is the misunderstanding is, it's not necessarily the dispatcher at the police department. The police department's not going to be closed. The lobby might be closed so someone can't come in and get the gym key. Or someone might, you know, if they want to come in and make a report, then they still have to call 911. They contact us, the police officer shows up to the PD and makes the report. The police department's not going to be closed. Now, having someone in the building, okay, fine. What we need is another officer on duty to make us safe. We need another police officer. We need two on shift.
I understand. I get that.
That would make me feel safe. For example, I work night shift, right? So if anything happens like he says, which has happened multiple times at 2:00 in the morning, you know, my chief lives in Kingfisher, my other officer lives in Kingfisher, my other officer lives in Kingfisher, my other officer lives in Ames. We have a couple reserves that live in town, but what happens if they don't answer their phone? County sometimes has one deputy on duty. Sometimes they have two, sometimes they have three.
Really? At night?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Three at night? I'd like to see the records on that.
Now, the thing is, I have to hope and pray that if I get anything, they're not on the other side of cashing over in Kingfisher at the jail on a call, because then I have nobody.
Right.
So it's not, so what I think the misunderstanding is, to make us feel safer, it's not the dispatcher sitting in the building that would make us feel safer because we would feel a lot safer with the actual 911 dispatch. Because then we could talk to our deputies like everyone's been saying. We could talk to the deputies, which we can't right now. There's been multiple calls where we're running all over town. For example, we had a call where we had two guy, or two people bail out of a car. Me and my officer at the time, we're talking to each other because we can, running on foot in our cars all over town, trying to find these people. We have a deputy who, you know, he couldn't even, we couldn't talk to each other. So if so happened, he drove by, we would have to shine our flashlight to flag him down. And then he'd come over and, you know, because we don't have time to just hawk on the phone. We're trying to chase somebody down.
I got it. I got it. You can't just call the dispatcher and they can get county?
By the time the bag gets relayed, if we call the dispatcher, then the dispatcher has to call 911.
I got it. But you got lucky that night. You got lucky that some guy just showed up for county. I mean, I just wasn't aware that they had that time.
So anyways, like I said, we tell our dispatcher, dispatcher has to call county, county has to tell their deputy. Then by that time, the information's changed just like that. So now we have to keep doing that all over again. It's annoying. So this would actually make us safer. We don't need the dispatcher in the building to make us feel safer. We need another officer to make us feel safer. We need two on duty to feel safer.
Because if we had 911 at that time, 911 would hear everything. These two officers are communicating and they can get the county here versus relaying.
Might want to do that.
We can't right now. Our radios are encrypted and I don't understand all, how it all works, but basically, our systems are compatible right now.
And so they're going to be paying for that upgrade, right?
They will have to be erased and reprogrammed.
Aren't they, aren't they paying for us to be upgraded here so we can?
They are paying for a repeater to be here so that if one of our officers is out here standing next to a car and needs help and keys up his handheld, they will get the repeater and transmit it to 911 dispatch.
Okay, which it wouldn't do earlier to our people.
We're on a completely different, we're on a, and please don't call me in this because I think it's calling NX, NXDM, it says something right here.
I can't remember the acronym.
This will put us on a DMR system. So do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Most places, most counties around us are running on a DMR system. And it will help us communicate better. It will not help us communicate with Garfield County. But Plain County and everyone else around us, Lowden County, is going to give better communication.
And this is going to, I've forgotten how much it's going to cost us every year.
We're going to pay them.
We have to pay them.
So right here, our fee schedule has to break down. Kingfisher County is going to pay.
I just couldn't remember how much it was.
The city of Kingfisher, the city of Hennessy and the city of Acarji.
Yeah, and so how much was it?
Ours is annually $41,394.
$41,000?
Mm-hmm.
And we're paying how much for dispatchers right now for 24/7?
It's like a hundred.
A hundred and thirty?
It was, I think it was $140,000.
Barb.
I still, I don't think it's a good idea. I just don't think it's a good idea.
I had my reservations too, so did Bert. When Harold originally brought this up, there's a lot of, there's a lot of research that Harold had done that Bert and I had not done. So throughout these past six months, when he brought it up the first time, we've, we've done a lot of research. We've talked. I don't think anybody here that's on board, myself, Tiffany, anybody would be willing to do this, but it would put our officers in danger.
Absolutely.
That's our, that's our main priority. I would, I as their boss would never want one of my officers in danger.
I would think so.
So if I thought this would be less safe for our officers, I would be completely against it. I would voice that opinion here at these board meetings.
It's going to be, and if we have to go back to this, which I understand from the contract that we could get out of the contract at some time, it's still going to be costly.
You got to give a 90-day notice to get out of this?
Yes, still going to be costly because then you've got to try to rehire all those dispatchers.
Well, as far as officer safety goes, I think the focus shouldn't be on the dispatch because we're going to have a dispatch regardless, okay? We're still going to get information relayed. The focus should be, why can't we have two officers on duty at the same time? Because something that actually happened not too long ago, someone dropped off somebody who was six foot, you know, three, four, 200 something pounds high on metal. Who had to fight him? Where was my backup? Kingfisher.
Yeah.
Because to my understanding, you know, the reserves that we have, nobody answered the phone.
Yeah.
And the deputy was in Kingfisher. We actually have, it just so happened that one of our Hennessy officers, you know, overheard what was going on, who also lives in Kingfisher. He called the PD, asked, hey, what's going on? Heard, you know, I was in a fight. And he got dressed, you know, and so both my backup came from Kingfisher.
Yeah, but that dispatcher answered the phone for you.
The dispatcher's going to answer the phone no matter what building he's in.
I know, I know, I know. I'm just.
But in order to feel safe, I would prefer another officer on duty because that's 30 minutes that I'm sitting there.
But apparently, I don't know, is he going to get another officer on duty?
Well, that's a whole different, that's a whole different discussion, but that's where I think the focus should be.
Well, I mean, I think that's, I think that's important.
We're trying to hire two reserves now and, you know, and the planning board, I'm sure is going to be brought up, you know? Because there is people on boards, I know, people on that want that. But, you know, I saved some money doing, getting rid of the dispatchers and I.
Oh, I don't use that term, getting rid of the dispatchers.
I'm blunt, so, and one of my focus was for more police officers. You know, but that's my, my view of it.
I got it.
So, you know, I mean, I'm sorry to be blunt, but.
No, no, that's what you are. And I appreciate that because I am too. I, I hope it works because obviously this is what you've decided and you're going to go for it. I just felt like I needed to voice my opinion and that of others. I don't know whether anybody else is here in the audience.
You know, my, and a lot of it is, is as older people, we're not used to all the technology stuff that's going on and it's happening. And we got to move forward with our community that way, you know? Just like the sirens playing chimes, everybody thought that was good, but 40 years ago, our grandma probably had a heart attack there, chimes going. You know, so, I mean, this is part of life that we got to, that we got to accept, you know? I've been teaching my kid, he's 31 years old, to call 911.
Yes, all children.
And when we go to the school, our firm goes to school every year and does a fire prevention program with grades pre-K through four. And we actually have them come up and dial a 911 call. Now, I'm faking it because I'm sitting there on my cell phone calling our dispatcher and then they turn around and page us out so the kids can hear how to make a call and what happens when we get the call. But we've been preaching 911 to kids for, ever since Tyson was in Fort Craig.
I've seen stories where little kids maybe say their parents are something in a house fire or something because they knew.
They know 911.
They may have been a little kid, very little kid, but they knew to hit 911.
I just wish that we had a better way to.
Here's a prime example. Here's a prime example, Barb. I got a Lancer right here. If I pass out on my floor, it's going to call 911. It ain't going to call 853-444.
I know.
You know, and I hope, if it did, then I'm hoping it ain't calling back here to town Hennessy to tell them I live over here at 319 West Third Street. I'm hoping they get the ambulance there quick, you know, because I'll be dead by the time they transport back and forth. And that's where our technology goes, you know, is stuff like this gets put in you, you know? And you hope it, our technology for the town of Hennessy comes up to that. That's what made me do this was I started looking at, when they had put this in there, that's why I started looking forward to this stuff, you know? Because I want to be advanced, I want our town to be advanced because this technology's out there. And you think I'm messing with you after, I'll take my shirt off.
Well, we had, and the 911 director, the 911 director told me they're looking into equipment that if you call 911 and you need an ambulance, this will send them your heart rate directly to the ambulance and an EKG.
I remember that conversation.
An EKG where they can have that transmitted to the hospital before they even get to you, so. Anyway, we need to. I make a motion to approve the 911 in our local agreement with Kingfisher, subject to the town attorney's changes.
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I hope you'll hire more officers so this young man can have another officer.
I would love that.
That'd be great.
I would love that.
Also, if they lived in Hennessy, it'd be great too, but we don't get applicants from Hennessy.
What?
Okay, item I, discussion with possible action on replacing town owned vehicles, police water streets or et cetera. Tiffany?
Well, Aaron and I have been talking because, you know, we talked about wanting to replace the police car, you know, keep it on a rotation. Well, we've been contacting the state to try to get one on state bid for, we've been working on it for a year, almost.
We haven't got a car since 2020. They've just been, since COVID, the components and everything for the new police car, any car in general is hard to get. So they're backward, like, what do you tell me, that's crazy? He's like 200 cars behind right now for the state. So.
But what, all he's getting right now is flat cars. They're not light. And also, the Ford Explorer. Um, and also the Ford Explorer, um, the state contract price went up seven thousand dollars, so they're the same price as the Tahoe now. So we need some direction because, you know, we've, we've gotten this white Explorer, you know, time and time again, and now we can't even get a white Explorer. So what, we need some direction from the board on that.
I remember when the Hennessy police department had a red car, a green car, a tan car, and a white car all at the same time.
I don't care. I felt definitely, I don't care. Just take, I'll drive it.
But I, I think it's important that, I think it's important that we match, honestly do. I think people need a visual on those police cars. We've got them all, graphics alike.
How, how long?
But I don't know how to get you a white one because if there's.
Cars, we have some two older cars right now that today we're gonna have to pay over two thousand dollars on to get work done. Because our, we have some cars with eighty thousand miles on them now. These, these Explorers just start transmissions on them and a lot, a lot of stuff's just not, about eighty, ninety thousand miles, they're done.
Why don't we lease?
That's what.
Hmm, yeah.
Well, we can see if there's any leased cars.
You know, I mean.
The thing is, is we put quite a few miles on them and so therefore.
But that means you're gonna get near a car, you know, more often.
But I've never, I've never looked into leasing for police vehicles or any things like that, but.
And then I look at it as.
I'm gonna get into your cages all the time.
Yeah, you're gonna have all the decals, the, all that good stuff that you probably have to pay to put on it unless they provide that, which most places probably won't.
I'm gonna ask them, have we ever checked into?
Pretty restrictive about drilling holes and things, you know, mileage and maintenance and things like that.
It's not the mileage so much on our cars, it's gonna be the hours on the motor, idle time and things like that. The guy's working, he works in our shift, he's, he's in his car for hours, so.
We could explore that.
I just don't know.
I'm afraid they wind up, it'd be more money, but I, I don't think it would hurt to explore it and find out if, if that's an option.
Does anybody know if the Chevy weighs last longer?
Well, I've been told, yeah. Please do.
Yeah.
We, I've talked to some people who have a hundred and twenty thousand miles on theirs. They're still driving. Dave, uh, Dave Rollers, he's probably got more than that on it. His Chevy.
Yeah, I mean, remove the, the Ford Chevy opinion.
No, no.
Is there any facts on, on either one of those?
Well, the Tahoe is bigger also. I mean, like, has more.
More store room.
So that's.
I think it's.
Ryan used to have a Tahoe.
I think a Tahoe, and I may be wrong, but I think it is a heavier built vehicle. I think it would be more.
It's on a truck chassis also.
Yeah, correct, yeah. It's an S U V and the Explorer's more of a crossover, I, I think.
You might check for the highway patrol just later. They have, you know, they got the Dodgers.
I think they're out trouble. I think, I think they're having trouble getting cars too.
Yeah, they are, but it's a different brand.
Well, the guy we talked to, it wasn't necessarily, it, it was just fleet. It wasn't necessarily any kind of brand. He could say Ford, Dodge.
Yeah, we're not just going to.
No, it's, it's, because it's the state bid contractor.
Yeah, state bid contract. So I, we've been on a list since last May or April, and they still have a park for us, you know.
What, what's your recommendation? I mean, I guess what I'm asking is how critical are we for a car? Do we need to take a black car whether we want one or not? Are we at that point?
I, I don't.
Or do we keep waiting or?
I think we're pretty close because we have been waiting.
I know.
I just, I don't know how long Bert will have to wait to get a white car, you know, it's.
That's just crazy.
I, I thought it was crazy too, and he told me yesterday because when Tiffany, when Tiffany I got put on this list, he didn't say anything about it. We, we talked about it. He said, I got, he told her, uh, Tuesday that he, oh, he'll be on a list. I called him back and said, okay, so you have us on a list for a Ford Interceptor. How soon can that come in? How soon could, do you have any other vehicles that may come in sooner? He said, yeah, I have a Tahoe that come out, that'll be ready like in May, I think.
But it's black as well?
It's black. Every, he said, every vehicle he has right now is black.
A big white stripe.
Here's another companies that can change that, right?
Yeah.
That's about three grand for one side.
Oh, really? Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty expensive, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I honestly, I guess I don't know.
Lights in a cage are expensive too. I mean, we're gonna, gonna put lights on a car because they're expensive?
I mean, I guess it depends on how much you want us to be black or white or, yeah.
Just slowly transition to black vehicles. I think they look sharper anyways, plus a lot of uniforms.
But you touch a hot, black vehicle.
The only thing, the white one.
Don't get arrested.
White ones too, believe it or not, are a lot easier to keep clean. Nothing's harder to clean than a black car.
You ask your question with a pickup. You know, I've seen some police, uh, police, uh, people go with pickups.
I don't, no, the police package, I ask it not to, uh, in a, in a police package, they don't have pickups right now. You can buy a regular pickup and turn it into a police, like a police vehicle, but it's not gonna have the suspension, the brakes, the motors, all that stuff like a police vehicle, what have. So it's, we're in a weird spot right now. I assume this guy does, he's, he's the fleet for the state, so I assume he does it for every agency that will call him to get his vehicles. Uh, I can't, I don't know that for sure, but that's how I took it when I talked to him. And he said, all he's getting right now, he has like three hundred Tahos that's allotted to him. And he got told no on ninety of them. And he has like, what did he say, ten or twenty Explorers? That's it. For the, for the twenty twenty three.
Sounds like there's a shiver way in our future.
He has Tahos.
So you could get the Tahoe now?
But it's black.
It is black. He, he told me that, uh, he said, let me know if I, I gotta put your name on it. If not, somebody calls tomorrow, it's gone, so.
What is state bid price on a Tahoe?
Forty three thousand.
How much?
Forty three.
Forty three?
The Explorer, the Explorer and the, and a Tahoe are both forty three.
That's not.
That doesn't sound that horrible to me.
My pickup was more than that.
Can you imagine how sharp it would look, a black Tahoe? You can't deny that would look sharp.
You're selling it really well, aren't you?
Even for me, just for the car.
I think Matt just earned him a, a position as a detailer within the police.
I ain't trying to hurt Bert.
The chief's car.
Yeah, chief's car, be definite. Everybody, everybody let go and hang where they see me.
He's the officer in charge.
That's good.
I mean, I, it is what it is. I, you guys obviously, in my opinion, have to have reliable equipment.
I honestly have no preference. If you guys go up from being white, I still don't know how long that's gonna take.
Well, that's just it, and I don't want you guys getting in a bind because we've got you in a.
Right now, Officer.
I'd rather have you in a black vehicle around than a white one that doesn't, trust me.
Right now, Officer Logan's driving our extra, that's the reserve truck. If something happened to that, I don't know what we'd do, so.
So you've got a car down?
Yes, yeah, it was in the shop right now. They had two recalls on it and, uh, the water pump was leaking and I get, apparently to fix that, you have to take the motor apart. So they were working on that today, uh, trying to get fixed. They're coming back. They need a couple of other parts, so just a, just the water pump on that car is, uh, nineteen hundred dollars. But we're, now they've added another five or six on top of that to get this car running again.
Hundred dollars for a water pump?
Oh, don't get Aaron started on spending money. He hates doing P O's. He's like, this is just costing me money.
If you worry about that, that's not the problem, trust me. It pains me every, I almost don't wanna sign it.
He's not lying.
Get on the list for a second. We're staying.
Water pump?
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Hundred dollars for a water pump?
They gotta turn the whole motor down.
You know what I mean, though?
Is it not?
Is it that much less expensive? For state bid where, I mean, if somebody just got on the phone and started looking for interceptors around the country, is that a?
We've actually been doing that too, and we can't find any.
So you know, you know how before, there's one agencies here in Oklahoma that would buy all Missouri highway patrol cars? They can't do that right now. You know why? Missouri can't get cars. So it's, it's a nationwide thing. It's getting the components shipped over here to make these cars. That's the problem. And I.
In fact, I did not realize that the guy that I've been dealing with for all the other vehicles did the police cars too. Um, up until I told him to put us on the list, but Aaron has been calling all over.
I get a used one that has fifty thousand miles on it. My, my way of seeing that though is I know how hard police cars are driven. And the mile, the, the hours that are put on those engines, you don't know what you're getting when you get a vehicle that has fifty thousand miles on it.
I know.
I would want one of our cars, fifty thousand miles, to sell somebody. I would go talk to them, do that to somebody, another police department.
So let's get on the list. Tiffany, what's your intent here? I mean, do we need to?
Well, you know, we're.
Do we need to go ahead and make a motion to purchase?
I think, well, unless you guys want us to look at the lease.
I'm sorry?
I think we already have a vehicle allotted for the year.
There's one.
Right, yeah, I know you've got one budgeted, but from what you were saying, Aaron, with the, he, he can put our name on it, but if somebody calls tomorrow and our name's not on it, it's gone.
Right.
So do we need to act now? Are these, for forty three thousand, is that equipped?
It's not gonna be equipped. No, you're talking about another.
You still have to get lights.
You have to get lights. Probably, I don't know how much that costs.
And a radio.
Another twenty five thousand for that?
No.
Shouldn't. Not for the, all the other?
Probably about ten.
Yeah, about ten. Fifty three thousand though.
Yeah, those cages are expensive.
And of course, nothing we've got equipped going for an Explorer.
No, because it's a different vehicle. That's what we used to do is we used to move them from the Explorers over.
The interiors of these cars are also, if you jumped in, all of our Explorers, they're all different in the interior, from year to year. We have one all the way from, uh, Brian's all the way back to two thousand thirteen. And you jump in his, all the way from the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and my twenty, they're all different. The cages, you couldn't put one from the other.
You wouldn't want that cage.
That's my design.
I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is.
Definitely.
Car we buy, or the last few cars we bought, come equipped?
We bought it from an outfit.
Dan's, we like Dan's supply.
Dan's Safety Supply.
We like Dan's, Dan's supply, and basically they don't, they don't have the cars. They buy it from the same person. I assume that we're buying, we're buying it from him. He's just, they're the little man. So you purchase a car, probably from the fleet, and they equip it.
Who's gonna equip it?
I, I was gonna call Dan's supply because they're, they're the ones that did my car.
Okay, but it would be professionally done and?
Now, yeah, so the, it would already have, you know, the spotlight, the spotlight on the driver's side. It'd have all that stuff, like a normal police car. It just wouldn't have the lights on it and the radio and, and the radar and that stuff.
Okay.
Man, I can get you a number tomorrow if you want on how much it costs to outfit the car also.
Well, that's gonna be us table, yeah, but I think that's probably information we need to know.
I think so too.
Does it cost money to put your due in for one for next year now?
That's where I was going.
Yeah. Put, yeah.
As far as I, as far as I can tell, you basically, I think you, you might have to.
You just put your name on the list and however, when he gets some in, then he starts down that list.
And if you're not ready.
Then you go.
You can back to the.
Down to.
At least you're on the list.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Keep your name on the list.
That would just, because I know the school buses, they, they buy them like two at a time. They buy one they need now and there's one coming.
Yeah, I, regardless, we get a car, we have to outfit it. So I mean, it's gonna, it's probably about ten thousand dollars, but, uh.
Right.
Regardless, it has to be out, it's gonna have to be done, so.
Okay.
I think we're, she, she and I are looking for guidance, guidance if you guys are even be okay with the black car. If we're, we need to wait or, uh, go ahead and move on through.
Go for it, I think.
Because I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we have to like, put a, give a P O number on this. I don't know how the, how does it usually work? You buy from one of the town vehicles.
Um, usually if he puts my name on one, then I don't have to do it.
Because he said the one that is free right now, somebody backed out on it.
But does he have it or is it on one of the ones?
It's being built. The cars, the cars being built would be done by May is what he told me.
It's just allocated to him.
Usually when they're being built though, he does call you and say, hey, you still want the vehicle and that's why he hasn't, the Ford Explorers, he hasn't, Ford has not started building any yet, so.
Well, here's what I'm wondering, if we shouldn't go ahead and approve one tonight and get our name on it? I'm trying to think how we could do that.
Probably so.
I'd like to have a price with equipment. Of course, I, I understand.
Can you, can you approve up to ten thousand dollars for the equipment? And the, um, the lettering and the radio and the, uh, lights? I think that's pretty much.
Radar.
The radar, um, and then?
Let's just say graphics, graphics lighting and electronics.
We probably, I don't really keep P O's in there, but we probably find the one from before and just tell you exactly how much it costs because it's the same people who be doing it.
But I think it probably will go up.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, everything went up like twenty percent.
Good. You can do that.
But we are, we are slotted for a vehicle this year. I don't remember the.
So.
I think we have budgeted.
We need a motion?
So we'd have to do a budget. Um, also, before you, I need a little bit, you'll notice that there's more departments on there.
Yeah, I'm trying to overlook that.
No, 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 no. We've had our name, they just don't have any trucks. I mean, we can't put our name on one until, what, June? Isn't that what he said?
For, I think he said June.
June. Oh, no, if it's.
Call, call us back in June if you ever remember, if he said call back, I'll take that.
So a half ton versus a three quarter ton, like a three quarter ton, maybe May? And then a half ton would be June. So my question is, um, what kind of vehicles would we be looking at? Then another question is, is I've got Kyle Watkins' truck. It went to the shop because he has all kinds of bulk codes going off on it. It's a two thousand eight with approximately a hundred and fifty seven thousand miles on it. Um. And it's going to cost just to see, I mean, just to, it's gonna cost possibly anywhere from fifteen hundred to over three thousand dollars to fix it. So my question is, do we want to just park it and wait till we can get a vehicle? Or do we want to put that money into it? That's my question on that. And then my other question is, on the pickups, are we looking at?
Twenty two.
Yeah, twenty two.
We get a pickup for twenty two?
A half ton.
I don't think we ought to put three thousand dollars in an oh eight model of a hundred and fifty some thousand miles.
I didn't think so either, but I just want to.
Well, what a three quarter ton run.
I think they're around twenty six.
How much did we spend on Bonnie's truck in the last month or two?
Too much? This has only been like three hundred dollars.
I thought we changed their, their big, their conditioner and all that.
That was, that was like a year or two ago, yeah.
My thoughts on, on, for the water department, um, sewer and such, I think we'd be better off with three quarter ton vehicles. Just because they're, they're heavier duty, we're pulling trailers. Will a half ton do it? Yes. But your suspensions on a three quarter ton are, are stiffer and stronger. And I just think we would, I think we would get more longevity out of a three quarter ton.
How much more is it?
Three thousand.
I think three, about three thousand.
About four.
Four, about four.
I thought, I thought he said the one tons and two quarter tons are about, almost the same price as when, I thought that's what he said, close to that. The difference between those two aren't very much either.
Around twenty two? I thought they were.
No, no, I thought about the three quarter ton and the, and the one ton.
So we, did we allocate for a pickup in the budget?
We did, but we can't get one, so, I mean, now that I talked to him the other day, I'm just trying to get you guys' feel.
Do we need to put our name on one of those too?
Well, if we would rather a three, right now we have our name on a half ton. But if we'd rather a three quarter ton, then we can put our name on a three quarter ton instead.
Do we get a discount if we buy one for the coffee and one for the department?
No, because they can get it two different places.
Um, but my also thing is, do we want to park Kyle's truck and have them share a vehicle? Because they share anyway, so.
Would that eliminate us having to buy vehicle right now?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be like we. Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be like we need one like today.
So Kyle just wouldn't have his own assigned truck?
Correct.
Would that create us any problems with work issues or?
I don't, no, I talked to Alyssa, and Alyssa said no, because, um, usually two of them are in the same vehicle during the day anyway. Um, one person takes call a week, so whoever's on call would take, that week would take a vehicle home. Um, between him and Jamie, so, I mean, to me.
Tiffany, I, I'm of the opinion that you know more about this and what, what logistical work than, than I do. And if that's not gonna create us a problem, then I'd say let's, let's look at doing that.
Okay. So do we wanna put our name on a three-quarter ton, or just take our name off?
How are we on other, I know that old red pickup that's-
Yeah, it's on its last, like, it has a hundred and ninety-seven thousand miles on it.
Is the one you were talking about, the rusted-out white one?
No.
Really?
That's a two thousand nine.
Wish, yeah.
No, it's the one that, it's the, um-
That's the old fire truck, isn't it?
No.
No.
It's, um, we had two thousand, two, we bought two that year, two thousand eights. And we just retired the other one about two years ago and sold it at auction. And then, um, this one is, yeah.
Well, what's the little red flatbed, uh, C R L T?
That's the fire truck.
That's a fire truck.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah.
They don't have very many miles on them.
They had about ten on it when we-
That was mainly to pull that big trailer we got.
Yes.
But I thought that was a nice truck.
It's a one, it's a one-ton diesel, yeah.
I make a motion to put our name on the list to purchase new vehicles, one for the police department and one for the town.
Three-quarter ton or half-ton?
Three-quarter ton.
So, roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I promised Cliff I'd have him out of here by eight, so.
He's like, yeah.
I didn't, Jay, discussion was possible, I actually give Tiffany Tillman, Town Administrator, a five percent raise.
The reason why I wanted this on here is because this is my feeling, that we have asked Tiffany to do a lot of things. And Tiffany took over when we made a department go away. And we did not compensate her for that time, and I, we were supposed to go into executive session last time, and that did happen, so I felt compelled to put this on the agenda, so, uh, I know she hasn't had a raise since then, and I, I think that's been probably three or four years, and we've had some bad times we went through, I know.
Twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen. Oh, my goodness.
I didn't know, so I asked her.
Twenty-fourteen. And so I felt that, that her job, what she's doing, I know she's asked for us to tell her what she wants, but she just really does a fantastic job. I don't know when anybody ever got an audit, and there was not one thing that wasn't done on there, and that's just hats off. Hats off. I mean, that's fabulous, and that's, I've been audited so many times, and I've never had that. But I just want to put this out there, and I just would like to have some discussion on it. And I, I just feel that we could really use this, and, and I really appreciate Tiffany.
I, Cliff, and I agree wholeheartedly with everything you're saying. In fact, I'm the one that put it on the agenda last month. Um, but you said discussion, since it's a matter of personnel, I don't think we can discuss. I think we can either vote yea or nay. Um, but I don't think we can discuss.
Okay.
Um, because it's a matter of personnel.
I think we oughta table it for the next month. With our other board member being here. But I also like to say I misunderstood what we're actually going back into executive session for. You know, I, I, I would also like to go into executive session next month with what, uh, the, the correct, however you wanna say it, to do it. I misunderstood. I tried to get it out there, but it wasn't, I couldn't get, I couldn't, I guess I couldn't get it out there the way I, I thought I should get it. And it wouldn't explain to me why, exactly why we was going in there. And I think we could go into executive session next month with the, the proper language and actually discuss.
I, uh, I wouldn't have a problem with, with doing that. Because Tiffany has asked us to do that, for one thing, too, and we failed to do it, so how do we know for sure we're gonna do it next month?
Well, we can, 'cause we can't go down there.
I, I understand that.
But my deal was, like I said, the, you know, you can't go back in there, you know, and I was explaining to you later, that we could go back in and sit, discuss several things about her, and not just one.
Yeah, we can discuss anything, but-
I mean, I can't, I can't really talk about it, right?
Right, right, yes, for sure.
But, you know, I thought we could only do about one thing, where we could actually go back there and talk about different things, yeah, so.
As long as the person is listed on the agenda, you can, getting informed.
Right, yeah. You put it on, what's your pleasure? Do you want, are you comfortable?
Well, I do, I do see that we do have a board member absent and, and not there, and I, I feel, I do know there was miscommunication, but I, I was, I felt really bad for not doing that, so that's why I put it on here like that. And I, and I do really like what you do, and so I will, I will see you, I will do that. We'll, we'll go to executive, well, we'll attend to, we'll table it, and we'll do this next month. And I will also tell you that I did this one hundred percent on my own. I did not call anybody or talk to anybody. I did this one hundred percent. I called, uh, Katie as soon as I could, 'cause I put this on the nine-one-one about the road for there, so I just want you to know that this was one hundred percent me.
Katie, would you put that on the next agenda for us?
Yeah, I already got it.
Thank you, Harold.
And, and Tiffany, if you would, I think that would be a good time you've asked for us to, to give you a job description, job performance, and I think that, I, I think that would be a good opportunity for all of the board members to come talk to Tiffany, and in the meantime.
And I will be also, I won't be running away.
Okay.
But, I'm gonna have to leave.
Okay. I almost made it for, item K, discussion with possible action to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash oh-two, O M A G to distribute escrow account funds. Y'all, everybody's leaving.
So O M A G, um, they do their loss ratios, um, and so from back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, workers' compensation plan here, um, versus what they paid out for all of their municipalities. This is what they got in, and we have four hundred and one eighty there. So in order for us to get that four hundred and one eighty, we have to do a resolution.
Agreed. You got that, Harold?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash oh-two, O M A G to distribute escrow account funds in amount of four hundred and one eighty?
Second, I'm sorry, roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, new business? Citizens comments, anybody?
I have one. Um, I understand that the planning meeting for next month, there'll be two board members not able to attend.
It's this month, isn't it?
It's this month. It's the twenty-first of this month.
Okay, leave him, leave him back, works. Is there a chance to move that, so we can have the full board present for that?
What two board members do you think is gonna be on?
Um, David and Richard aren't gonna be here.
I knew Richard wasn't, but I haven't heard anything else about any of the rest of them.
Okay. I heard, I thought, from, I heard from Richard that David was gonna be here.
The thing of it is, I think with, with Dave, uh, he was scheduled to have hip replacement, I think, like, next week, and then move him up to this week, that's why.
Oh, so it's done sooner?
So.
Okay, so we can even roll them in a wheelchair if we need to.
Yeah, my, 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 my back, my back, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't realize he had hips.
Okay.
The only thing is, is we planned this out with the school having the room and with the facilitator, and so if we don't do it now, we'll have to push it out probably close to six months, so.
And I'll get it done, yeah.
Okay, councilperson's reports. Richard, you got anything?
I'll go back to Jack. I don't know if you want to say anything about the library.
Library. Yeah, I think what I would like to do, if it's okay with you guys, is to, I'd like to call a meeting, um, with the intent to form a historical society, um, and then hand off to them to, to do what they need to do. And I think, um, we've talked briefly about kind of where, if we form a historical society, their responsibility would be to raise funds, to give to the town, to make the improvements they wish or feel need to be made. So they're kind of giving you a fundraising arm, if you would, and to look after.
Now, when you say to call a meeting, are you, are you asking us to call a special board meeting?
No, 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 I'm telling you kind of what I'm thinking of, I just need to do. I just wanted to, I guess, let you know, or see if you had any questions before I did that.
You mean before you ran it through your committee, or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I'm gonna call a meeting with my, our committee, and, but at the same time, I, I think they're already ready to just do it. But I wanna, I call a committee meeting, library committee meeting, and at the same time, try to get someone to step up and lead this historical society thing. And then, um, I mean, I'll counsel, but I can't be the guy. I can't, I just can't do it all, so that was my goal. So if you guys are comfortable with that, I think I'll proceed.
Yeah, proceed, and then, of course, it'll have to come back here to be voted on, but, uh, yeah, that's not a problem.
I'm a little bit confused on that, that statement.
He's, he's going to ask the library building committee to form a historical society, to help with fundraising, and then he'll bring it back to us to vote on to accept it being the historical society.
Okay, it's that last half that I wanna make very sure of. By us, probably on a town council, we're saying we wanna save the library.
Can, my deal is, can we change this deal about saving the library?
Okay, yeah, I, I agree. It's not saving the library, it's saving the building.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a building issue, not a library issue, yeah. So, yes, so this would be to essentially a head nod.
To raise money for that, and the town board approve it.
So you're agreeable that the town council would support this effort to save the high school building?
Well, Richard, that's what we'll have to vote on when Jack gets it approved by that committee and brings it back.
Okay. That's progress.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll see about calling a meeting, uh, the first of February then.
You got anything?
Uh, I know we got a planning board, twenty-first, and I know most of the department heads ain't here, but, you know, there's a lot of discussion going, or that's probably even brought up tonight, you know, just like the two fire, or two extra police officers and stuff like that, you know, and and it'd be nice to know that some of the little projects of these guys that, that actually, and some of the stuff that Town and Hennessy can afford, that the guys would bring forward to us, at this planning board, not all the big stuff and the bike dreams, but some of the little more, maybe even more achievable goals that we possibly do, you know, that, they, they might not think is, how do you say it, necessary to bring in front of us, but it would be kind of even the smaller goals.
Give an example.
We're like last year, which, we're gonna get back on, over here, so you want me to comment on now, wait till there?
Well, I need an example, 'cause you brought it up, so I needed to.
We're like the roof on the pump house. That was in E D, the lighthouse, you know?
So the lighthouse, let me explain the lighthouse. The lighthouse, I applied for a grant. And the grant was just denied about twenty days ago. So we did attempt to do, 'cause I even talked to Richard about it. We, we tried to do a grant for that, um.
I think we were swimming up the river on that, because I think the people we applied to, they want many smaller grants.
But I'm just thinking like little stuff like, you know, the, like I said, it's over here, but, uh, so I guess I wanted to talk very long on the next one, but maybe like parts for mulchers, extra valves for the water deal, you know, sitting in stock, you know? There's little stuff like that, you know?
But some of that stuff doesn't have to go before the board.
You know, but we can still plan it in, you know, that they want, instead of, do we have valves sitting in stock, you know? 'Cause when I ask them, they say, no, we don't have any, you know? So that's what I'm saying. I'm just telling you what they, you know?
Tells you that, because Alyssa orders it. She, she, anytime she uses a part, she orders the next time, she orders to replace that part.
But I'm just telling you what I was told, so I'm, I'm, you know, so that's all the thing I'm thinking about, little, you know? 'Cause what I read on this deal here, for the planning board for our meetings, a lot of that was the same thing they gave us last year.
It was pretty much, okay, so I told them to take what we had last year, put whether they, what they accomplished, and then if they wanted to add anything additional. Because you gotta keep what you had last year. I mean, this is, we're building a kind of, yeah, and then we're going to build off of that.
Yeah. My deal is, from last year, like I said, you read this stuff, Aaron almost put, almost acted per vam, that, at the end.
Yeah, it's not gonna-
So we didn't accomplish nothing last year for the police department, so.
I put it in red.
Um, we did, because we just bought a ten thousand dollar, uh, digit ticket.
Yeah, but like I said, we proved that the last year. But anyway, I'm motion adjourned.
Second, roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
I might have a councilperson right there.
Where you got the next one? You got the next one?
Richard?
Yes.
Let's go quick. This will be a meeting of the Hennessy Utility Authority, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, roll call, please.
Richard?
Here.
Cliff?
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David.
Okay, consider approval of consent agenda, minutes of meetings, approval of claims as follows. December purchase orders, six oh-six seventy-eight, January purchase orders, eighty thousand, eight seventy-six ninety-five, January meter deposit refunds zero, treasures report. Any additions or corrections? Since meter deposit refunds are zero, does that mean nobody moved out of town?
No, that's just because we hadn't got to them yet. I'm finding out it doesn't. They'll be on next one.
Make a motion to, to approve the approval of the consent agenda.
Second, roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments? Other scheduled business, discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Item A is discussion with possible action to accept twenty-one, twenty-two audit as presented by Ladonna Sinning with Aldridge and Associates. You got that, or?
All right. I just go right, I can make a, make a motion to accept the twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-two audit as presented by Ladonna Sinning with Aldridge and Associates.
Second. Second, roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item B is discussion with possible action to approve sewer damp station policy and procedures. That will be prepared as an ordinance to be approved at the next regular board meeting. Do we have that or?
We don't have an actual policy, because that's what I want to put in the ordinance. Did I, did you guys get printed out those?
Before you sign that contract with the county, would you try to get them to spell Hennessy correctly? There's about four or five places where it's misspelled.
Really? Okay, I think that's right.
So I have found where if a town does this, they have it in ordinance format, so that way it's in the ordinance book. It, it doesn't get lost as a policy in, you know, or a resolution. I mean, it's actually in the ordinances. And so I would like to have our city attorney draft up the ordinance for this. I have found a few similar policies. I think Perry was one of them when I was looking today. Enid, what they do is they have, pretty much all they have is that a person pays a permit fee of. Say, two hundred dollars and then they pay so much per, per thousand gallons. Or per gallon of, of seppage. Boni wanted to do like where you could do a monthly customer, you know, they would pay or. Which is how we did it in the past. They paid just a set fee, but we have no, with sewer, it's kind of hard because you really don't know exactly how much they're dumping into our, into our sewage system.
Can't meter it.
So I would propose, I mean, didn't you just go by what, what they tell you? Hey, I've got a five hundred gallon truck and it's half full, so two hundred fifty gallons. I mean, I think that's how some people do.
Well, I understand, some of them in the past, like I would ask them how big their truck was. And they would say that they only, that they would only like dump sometimes and only be half full. But I told, but I would always be sure to tell them that it doesn't matter how full or how empty you are. Your truck could hold up to the five hundred gallons and that's what we'll have to charge you for. And I mean, most of them were really, like, they were really okay with that.
But also I want to work on getting a fence down there. Fence it off and with a gate that, kind of like an electronic gate. Where they punch in a key code that they get from town hall that's valid for maybe two hours. And then they can go down there and dump. And then that way we would be able to monitor that. Because we would also get reports on that also.
So would that gate close the minute they're in? Or would it stay open?
No, 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 it would close.
And then they leave, that gate would close as soon as they left?
And as you, as soon as they use that code, then it would no longer be any good.
Right.
Or if we have a company that wants to do monthly. Then they would have a code and we would be able to see how many times they went in that month.
I think that's a great idea. So why don't we have the attorney prepare the ordinance and maybe you could check into the costs on the key code system and.
And then people with RVs. People with RVs, I think, that live in city limits, I think that they could call and get a code to use. And as long as they're paying, you know, I mean, if it's just an RV, I think that we could give them a code that they can just use for that one-time dump.
That's fair.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Okay.
Everybody taking one, right?
Yeah. Item C is discussion with possible action to accept the costs in the sales tax agreement with how to track stop water sewer agreement.
This is on here because he's needing something from his banker to show how much, um, he's going to get reimbursed through his sales tax. But I've been having some issues trying to, because he brings me this stack of invoices, some of them are duplicates, some of them don't have anything to do with water and sewer. And so I was trying to, I tell him I have to have an invoice. I mean, he was trying to give me quotes. I can't have a quote, I have to have an invoice. And so from what I've got so far is, is on the sheet that I've given everyone. Plus, I got a statement from Grade Work today. That's going to add about another twenty-nine thousand dollars on there. But this thirty-seven, six, six, four, oh, one for Grade Work, that was prepaid pipe. And so I'm really questioning whether some of these Oklahoma Contractor Supply and Southwest Flood Systems was in that prepaid pipe. And so I'm trying to get clarification, because when I talked to Katrina and David Fupsa at Grade Work, they said, yes. But if I take that number plus all of these invoices, it doesn't add up. So I'm still trying to get clarification on that.
I think we ought to have invoices for all things that he, he's wanted us to sign off on.
So, but I told him I would bring it before you guys and so.
So is this something you're recommending that we table until you get clarification?
I would say yes.
Katie?
Got it. But this may be something that we might have to have a special meeting on.
I understand.
My deal is, I thought, I mean, we reasoned, signed it after just what kind of problem we was going to have. Doing the work, you know?
Yeah, no, if we need to have a special meeting, just. Okay, item D is discussion with possible action to approve the purchase of a spare pump and spare muncher assembly for the town sewage system. David put that on and I'm not. Do you know what?
I don't have a clue.
I, I know he liked, uh, Dave's, uh, military, so I, I'm just going to sit at this table until he gets back. Both of these next agendas.
I, I know, I, I'm not sure what pump he's talking about.
Because they do have a spare pump, or we do have.
I do know that. I think the muncher. Gosh, the last one lasted for years and years and years. So I don't know, but yeah, we'll just table that to see what he, what he's got in mind, because I don't know. Item E is discussion with possible action to approve the roof repair on the Old Town Water Well on Second Street.
I think, I think that's one of the deals that was brought up at the last year's meeting.
Yeah. And I think that's something that can be done. Pre inexpensively, that's a little bitty building. Can we just do that?
Yeah.
See, I think it's back up on the, in the planning debate's brought up.
Do we need to make a motion?
Well, and some of that, I mean, some of that, it may sound to you guys like, well, why didn't that get done? It's just really easy. But when they're like going and busy with mowing and we've been down short a person and they're trying to keep everything going. I think some of that stuff does, but that's why we're having planning meetings, so we can talk about all of that stuff, too.
What has slipped through the cracks and what in?
It's to hold everybody.
So do we need a motion on that or is that something that we can just?
Well, that we need to get quotes.
Okay.
But I'll get a quote.
Okay. All right, new business? Sit in the comments again? Councilperson's reports?
I have one question there.
Okay.
Going back to that muncher. And the spare pump, are those things easy to order or are they behind like the police car?
We didn't have any problems getting a muncher.
We had repaired it, right?
No, we got a brand new one.
So it's not like the police car where we get squeezed?
It's those little chips, anything that requires a chip.
Anything that made you talk long?
The, and you said we do have a spare pump in stock?
I'm pretty sure, because we got a brand new one and we took that old one and we repaired it.
We had it rebuilt and had it as a spare didn't we? Yeah, I remember that. Anything else, Richard?
No.
I'm done, I said, I.
I hate to ask, but you.
I was done, I talked the last time.
I don't have anything.
I listened to this. When Santa Claus leaving? I make a motion adjourned.
Second, roll call?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.